Jim Allen.
In here.
There.
All aldermen are present. Motion to approve the ordinance for designation, motion by Alderman Dorchenaz, second.
Second.
Alderman Burdell. Roll call.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll.
Yes.
Lee Lanzotti.
Yes.
Yes.
Chris Colteddy.
Yes.
Megan Bryant.
Yes.
Approved eight to zero. Minutes of the Lake Committee meeting held April fifth, twenty twenty one. Minutes of the public hearing held April fifth, twenty twenty one. Minutes of the regular meeting held April fifth, twenty twenty one. Minutes of the Lake and Airport Committee meeting held April eighth, twenty twenty one. Minutes of the Water Environmental Committee meeting held April eighth, twenty twenty one. Minutes of the Finance Committee meeting held April fifteenth, twenty twenty one. And minutes of the Ordinance Committee meeting held April fifteenth, twenty twenty one. Motion to approve all minutes.
Amen.
By Alderman Bryant, second.
Second.
Alderman Dorchenaz, questions or comments? Roll call.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell. Yes. Ernie Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll.
Yes.
Lee Lanzotti.
Yes.
Jim Allen.
Yes.
Chris Colteddy.
Yes.
Megan Bryant.
Yes.
Motion is approved, eight to zero. Resolution, Christian County Multi Jurisdictional All Hazards Mitigation Plan. Motion to approve the resolution by Alderman Bud, second.
Second.
Alderman Bryant, questions or comments?
May I make a comment, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the resolution that you had before, you came about because your city clerk received an email last Thursday that the person who prepared that for her, that you adopted back in February, sent the wrong resolution, had the wrong language in it. So it's being re-done now, so the form you have, since you have to have a resolution to resc- uh, extend the resolution, uh, you need to add the language to that resolution. Afterwards, it says, "Resolution number fourteen fifty sixty one, hereby repealed." The clerk is gonna put a supplemental call in, and the resolution number one, this you're adopting tonight, is made effective retroactive to February one, two thousand twenty one. That should get you into compliance with the Christian County Hazard Mitigation Plan adoption.
Alright. Roll call.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll.
Yes.
Lee Lanzotti.
Yes.
Jim Allen. Chris Colteddy.
Yes.
Megan Bryant.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. Resolution, Tyler Technology Software Service Agreement.
We're gonna need to table that, please.
Okay, uh, motion to table, Alderman Bryant, second. Alderman Driscoll. Roll call.
I think it's already, anybody who wasn't at the last meeting, we're just not gonna take any action tonight.
Okay, cool. Correct, that was table one four, so we're not gonna bring it up. Alright, thank you. Motion to approve the request and issue a special event permit for the powwow to be held on June fourth through sixth, twenty twenty one, at Lake Taneville Marina, pending insurance.
Submissed.
Motion, Alderman Driscoll.
Second.
Second.
As a, as a four clock that, we had no information, did you get anything after that?
No, we have not received.
Okay, so motion to table.
Motion to table, Alderman Dorchenaz, second, Alderman Burdell. Roll call.
Hold on, I'm sorry. Ernie Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll.
Yes.
Lee Lanzotti.
Yes.
Jim Allen.
Yes.
Chris Colteddy.
Yes.
Megan Bryant.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes. Motion carries table eight to zero. Motion to approve the purchase of a new Cure Lamp Two Launch System at a cost not to exceed one hundred thirty-five thousand, if it qualifies as an eligible expense under BDD guidelines, and to waive all statutory bidding requirements. According to Steve Klein, this would qualify under BDD guidelines, as long as we prorated the sewer lines in the city compared to the sewer lines in the BDD, and I think, Mr. Mann, I think we came up with about one-third of the cost would be BDD eligible. So this would leave, according to my figures, forty-five thousand BDD, and then ninety thousand out of the street and sewer budget. So need a motion to approve that.
Submit.
Motion, Alderman Dorchenaz.
Second.
Second, Alderman Olive, questions or comments? Roll call.
Kathy Driscoll.
No.
Lee Lanzotti.
No.
Jim Allen.
Yes.
Chris Colteddy.
No.
Megan Bryant.
Megan. Megan wasn't ready for her name. Um.
Just right.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Motion.
Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Motion carries five to three. Motion to approve the intergovernmental grant agreement between the State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity and the City of Taylorville. Motion by Alderman Bud, second.
Second.
Alderman Driscoll, questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, can we change that motion to adoption of the resolution that I sent out this afternoon?
Okay.
After I read that fourth page agreement, I think it calls for a resolution, that the state will probably want. And I did send everybody a, a, a highlighted copy of that agreement, there's a lot of things, uh, I's and T's that need to be dotted and crossed to, to remain compliant with that one point five million project, so, um, you know, your city treasurer, of course, your city clerk and the engineers need to be really acquainted with that, there's gonna be a lot of, some checks and balances on that.
Okay, so will you change your motion to a resolution, Mr. Bud, and will you second that, Alderman Driscoll? Okay, so we're moving the motion to a resolution, to approve the intergovernmental grant agreement between the State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity and the City of Taylorville. Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Lee Lanzotti.
Yes.
Jim Allen.
Yes.
Chris Colteddy.
Yes.
Megan Bryant.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchenaz. Kathy Driscoll.
Yes.
Rocky, does Bruce need to vote on this?
Uh, yes.
Mayor votes yes. Motion carries nine to zero. Motion to approve the Class O Liquor License Application for Cardinal Restaurant Group, Taylorville Two LLC, Dustin Clark, doing business with Debbie's Video Gaming Cafe, located at one hundred South Main Street, pending receipt of insurance and payment of all fees. Motion to approve the license.
Move.
By Alderman Dorchenaz, second.
Second.
Alderman Bryant, questions or comments?
I have a comment.
Comment, Alderman Burdell.
You know, we've had a couple, uh, presentations over the last couple council meetings about how well the BDD and the Tech Street and the, uh, the Small Town USA website that we're putting together, and how well that's working downtown and other places. And although I've been adamant against raising the number of video gaming licenses, it seems like that's all we're gonna have in town. And I, I think that, especially up on the square, it's a bad idea to overload the square and the city as a whole with video gaming, and I, I just think that the neon lights and the banners are gonna get overwhelming with these new businesses and the other businesses that are trying to expand in town. But it's, you know, it sounds like a great idea to have twenty-seven Walmarts in town this size, but I'm sure there'd be an advantageous, there'd be a problems with having that many of the same businesses in a community of this size. And we've had the same issue with, uh, full income housing, you know, I work for a company that has full income housing. We have overloaded this community with that kind of housing, there is not a need for it anymore. Matter of fact, it's getting empty. And you can do the same thing with video gaming, at some point, you're gonna get too many, and you're gonna end up in the wrong location, that's gonna drive those other businesses out, so. I know this is my last meeting, I, I'd be wary on how many more you guys had at least.
Alright. Any other comments, comments, Alderman Driscoll?
I'm gonna vote no on this and the next one, and it's not gonna get forced against the people who are trying to start a business. My problem is, we already have thirty-five gaming establishments, I just counted that one the other day, yeah, we have thirty-five, and no limit to the license, because you always felt the market would balance itself, obviously, it's not, we keep adding more and more and more. And I'll stand behind my saying, just like with Sean, I think that it doesn't show a good image for Taylorville. Um, that, you know, if we have thirty-five establishments, we add two more, that's thirty-seven. And, and how many people spending their money on, on gambling is not money going into other things, I think it's a negative thing for our city and not a good one, so that's just my opinion.
Alright. Any other comments or questions? Roll call.
Jim Allen.
Yes.
Chris Colteddy.
No.
Megan Bryant.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
No.
Ernie Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll.
No.
Lee Lanzotti.
No.
Four to four, the mayor votes yes, motion carries five to four. Motion to approve the Class O Liquor License Application for Annings, Taylorville LLC, located at one seventeen West Park Street, pending receipt of insurance.
Submit.
Motion, Alderman Dorchenaz, second.
Second.
Alderman Bud, questions or comments? Roll call.
Chris Colteddy.
No.
Megan Bryant.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
No.
Ernie Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll.
No.
Lee Lanzotti.
No.
Jim Allen.
Yes.
Four to four, the mayor votes yes, motion carries five to four. Motion to recommend to the city council to direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance to decrease the liquor license fee by fifty percent at the poor establishments only, to be determined by the liquor commissioner. Motion.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question first.
Okay.
Can we please make sure that this is noted to be one-time only? The way it's written, it doesn't sound that way.
Okay.
Good call.
Right, well, he'll prepare the ordinance, so yes, we can have it one-time only, or for this year, twenty-one through twenty-two. Okay, so need a motion?
Can I say something real quick?
Yeah.
So, uh, our office had to put out all the statements to all the establishments, many of them have already paid, quite a lot of them have already paid their full rates. So if we pass this, we'll have to in- issue refunds to the people that have already paid.
Alright, so can I get a motion to approve that?
Move.
By Alderman Dorchenaz, second. You second. Alderman Burdell, questions or comments? Roll call.
Megan Bryant.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
No.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll.
Yes.
Lee Lanzotti.
Yes.
Jim Allen.
Yes.
Chris Colteddy.
No.
Motion carries six to two. Okay, motion to bid and/or advertise heavy equipment operator A in the sewer department.
Submissed.
Motion, Alderman Driscoll, second.
Second.
Alderman Bryant, questions or comments? Roll call.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll.
Yes.
Lee Lanzotti.
Yes.
Jim Allen.
Yes.
Chris Colteddy.
Yes.
Megan Bryant.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. City Attorney update, Rocky?
To brief that first, folks, the first one which I just wanted to remind everyone again, uh, to the status of the completion and conservation of the ordinance from number zero two seven concerning the purchase of the A vehicles, you have a deadline of April twenty-sixth to have them all submitted, approved, and money into an escrow account. I don't know where, uh, the city treasurer was at on this, but I did, uh, assist with the completion of that statement from, so just a pleasant reminder, April twenty-sixth is your deadline, keep that low interest rate that you have, so, uh, hopefully, you're working on it. Second thing is that I sent you an email, uh, let me get email again today concerning the two lawsuits that have been filed against the city by Jamal Shahar, and sometime in the future, I'll probably add to a confidential email, uh, to bring you up further in most status, but the bottom line is, uh, the, my motion that I filed was, was granted over his objection, and we have now until May seventeen to respond to the complaint, pending motions, and it's down in the history now set for later in the month, on May twenty-fourth, so, any questions, body that goes to I? If not, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Mayor or report. The election's over, at our next council meeting, we will seat three new aldermen. Congratulations to Steve Dorchenaz, Doug Brown, and Jeremy Wilson on their election, and congratulations to Larry Bud on his reelection. The citizens have elected a new treasurer, and I'd like to welcome Scott Alveson to the city as well. I would like to thank retiring aldermen Sean Burdell and Ernie Dorchenaz for their combined thirty-seven years of service. Also like to thank Alderman Lanzotti and Treasurer Nation for their service to the city. I've been busy drawing up committee assignments and invite each alderman to come in and discuss their committee assignment. I would also like for each alderman, past or present, to give me a list of trees on the boulevards that need to be taken down, so we can start the process of replacing sidewalks. We will continue to tear down dilapidated properties, and if the aldermen could give a turn up list from the ward, so we will start this process as well. Tomorrow, the first ever Lake Lotterie will be at five P M. at the Lake Shop. I invite everyone there. This will be our number one priority this year, cleaning up our lake area and the marina. I'd like to, the heartfelt thank you to all the superintendents and chiefs that have served under my administration the four years of my first mayorship, for their excellent work, I just can't thank the chiefs and the superintendents enough for what they have helped the city do in the four years I've been mayor. I believe the city is still headed in the right direction, and I ask for your help. Thank you very much. So. Committee reports. Discussion and/or motions to approve, adopt, and/or deny, and/or table, and/or amend, and/or refer to an appropriate committee and hold on part the matters regarding the following subjects, matters discussed at the committee level. Lake and Airport. Alderman Dorchenaz.
Thank you, Mayor, the first motion was to, uh, came out of a committee meeting, was to recommend the city council to proceed with the purchase of playground equipment as recommended by Superintendent Ordinant, at a cost not to exceed forty thousand dollars, money coming from the fifth ward, upon approval from the city attorney, Revine. If the money from the fifth ward cannot be used, and it can't be, the forty thousand will be taken out of the Lake Restoration Fund with the payment schedule being drawn up with a ten thousand dollars per year payback from the hotel motel tax fund. So this motion, uh, the way it's written, and the information from Attorney Revine, we can't take the money from the fifth ward, so the money would, would be coming from the, uh, uh, Lake Restoration Fund to be paid back from the hotel motel tax, and I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Motion, Alderman Dorchenaz, second.
Second.
Alderman Bryant, questions or comments?
I have a comment.
Comment, Treasurer Nation?
So, the, um, money in the hotel motel tax right now is only nine thousand two hundred ninety-seven dollars. And this, um, does not include everything that has come in for March for the hotel motel money. Um, now remember, you have to pay sixty percent of that out to downtowntaylorville.org, so I don't see where you're going to have the money in this account to repay this back every year, the way that the money is in this account now. Um, back in two thousand seven, when the Lake Shop was built, um, sixty-six thousand five hundred dollars, Chairman Williams at the time said it is necessary to do the building, and that the only way to pay it, uh, at, at present time, is to use the Lake Restoration Fund. Um, the aldermen at that time agreed that they would like to pay back the money to the fund when possible. That's never been done either, so, um, I just don't see where you're going to have the money now to do this one, and from two thousand seven, that's never been paid back either. That's my comment.
We had a motion in a second, so roll call.
Sean Burdell.
abstain.
Um. One last time.
One last one.
Start that off, boys.
Ernie Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll.
Yes.
Lee Lanzotti.
No.
Jim Allen.
No.
No.
Chris Colteddy.
Yes.
Megan Bryant.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
I think the motion carries four to three, correct?
One, two, three, five.
Five to three.
Two.
Abstain.
With an A name.
Would like to make a comment.
Comment.
You know, we've got, that, we do have some revenues coming in at the, at the lake, and, and they ought to be increased, I would think, with the rental of the cabins, because they've been, um, they've been dressed up some more, and they were dressed up last year, I think that, um, whatever, uh, we're, we're low on funds, I think that we can supplement it with some of that income. Um, and so I think we can at least take care of this one, I don't know about the other, um, that you're talking about, but I think that we can supplement this.
Okay. Next motion?
Uh, next motion was to, and the last motion was to recommend the city council to accept the bid for five hundred dollars from Dennis Crowder for the nineteen ninety-seven pickup truck, I'd like to make that in the form of a motion.
Motion, Alderman Dorchenaz, second. Alderman Driscoll, questions or comments? Roll call.
Ernie Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll.
Yes.
Lee Lanzotti.
Yes.
Jim Allen.
Yes.
Chris Colteddy.
Yes.
Megan Bryant.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. Water and Environmental, Alderman Burdell.
First motion that came out of the committee meeting was a motion to recommend the city council approve utilizing the I U P A lab fee program for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one through two thousand twenty-two, for a cost not to exceed thirteen thousand, but that figure has been changed, they lowered the rate to ten thousand one hundred twenty dollars and sixty cents, so I'd like to have that motion adjusted with, with like that, in others.
Could you tell me that number again, please?
Ten thousand one hundred twenty dollars and sixty cents.
Thank you.
I'll make that form a motion.
Motion, Alderman Burdell, second.
Second.
Alderman Olive, questions or comments? Roll call.
Kathy Driscoll.
Yes.
Lee Lanzotti.
Yes.
Jim Allen.
Yes.
Chris Colteddy.
Yes.
Megan Bryant.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchenaz.
I've never had the chance, and all the time I've been here, to ever abstain from a vote, but I learned something tonight that you can't, for no good reason, and so I abstain from this vote for no good reason.
Alright, motion carries seven to zero.
And his legacy was on.
Actually, actually, the motion has eight to zero, but that should.
Yeah, extension goes with the.
I understand, Rocky, I understand, I understand, but I still abstain.
Not his first rodeo, is it?
No.
Alright, maybe his last.
Second motion, that was to recommend the city council approve the purchase of John Deere Z seven forty R Z Trak from Sloan Implementments, at a cost not to exceed seventy-five hundred, make that in form of motion.
Motion, Alderman Burdell, second.
Second.
Alderman Bud, questions or comments? Roll call.
Lee Lanzotti.
Yes.
Jim Allen.
Yes.
Chris Colteddy.
Yes.
Megan Bryant.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchenaz. Kathy Driscoll.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Next motion was to recommend the city council to direct city attorney to prepare an ordinance to make change, changes, I should say, regarding the water collection office in, uh, in the city code book, as suggested.
Okay, motion, Alderman Burdell, second.
Second.
Alderman Olive, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Last motion was, uh, motion to recommend the city council to, correct, city attorneys to prepare an ordinance to change the, the term, reconnection fee, the processing fee. I'd like to make that form a motion.
Motion, Alderman Burdell, second.
Second.
Alderman Bryant, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Finance Committee, Alderman Bud.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, can I interrupt for a moment?
Alright.
Before you go to the next one there, and, and remind Alderman Burdell that, then looking at your April eighth, two thousand twenty-one, uh, Water Committee Minutes, there was a motion made to table the Novos Solutions Agreement that passed by a four to zero vote. Uh, with that having been done, I would just, 'cause you've already passed a resolution last month, or last meeting, to approve that agreement, so with that motion to table in the committee level, I would ask the mayor to remind the mayor not to sign that agreement until, uh, that committee and Mr. Spiegel gets, uh, get worked out with the Novos Solutions Agreement back at revised agreement for your consideration.
Alright, Rocky, Mr. Spiegel would like to talk to that matter.
That motion was to make an amendment to the previously approved agreement, so we did not make that change.
That motion to table was to, an amendment to the previous agreement, so we did not want to make the amendment change. Mr. Spiegel worked that out, so we should go back to the previous agreement that we did approve, correct, Mr. Spiegel?
Correct.
And there was a discussion at the Lake and, or at the Water Committee about an amendment, and that's what was tabled.
All of a sudden, they don't need the five hundred dollars.
Okay.
So. Is that right, Mr. Spiegel?
Correct, yes.
So they gotta go back to the Illinois jurisdiction, and then I gotta charge you for it.
Yeah, right.
Good.
Okay. See, we, we worked that out without you.
I just didn't understand the minutes.
Alright, thank you. Finance, Alderman Bud.
First motion was recommend the city council approve the Business Development District Redevelopment Agreement between the City of Taylorville and James Rom, uh, brick cash pond and jury located at one twenty South Main in the amount of six hundred and five dollars, make that in form of motion.
Motion, Alderman Bud, and second, Alderman Burdell, uh, questions or comments? Roll call.
Jim Allen.
Yes.
Chris Colteddy.
Yes.
Megan Bryant.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchenaz. Kathy Driscoll.
Yes.
Lee Lanzotti.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Uh, the second motion was recommend the city council approve the Business Development District Redevelopment between the City of Taylorville and American Legion, Post Seventy-three located at one-ten West Franklin, in the amount of six thousand three hundred twenty-three forty-five, make that form a motion.
Motion, Alderman Bud.
Second.
Alderman Driscoll. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Chris Colteddy.
Yes.
Megan Bryant.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll.
Yes.
Lee Lanzotti.
Yes.
Jim Allen.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Uh, the next motion was to recommend the city council approve the Business Development District Redevelopment Agreement between the City of Taylorville and Lee and Diane Skinner for the property located at two old West Marcus Street, in the amount of three thousand two hundred fifty, make that in form of motion.
Motion Alderman Bud, second. Alderman Bertle, comments or questions? Roll call.
Megan Bryant?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
John Bertle?
Yes.
Attorney Dorcheness?
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll?
Yes.
Lila Anzadi?
Yes.
Jim Oliver?
Yes.
Criscal Teddy?
Motion.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Uh, the next motion, recommend the city council to afford HBO, street sewer, garbage, M F T and safety budgets to the treasurer for further refinement. Make that in form of motion.
Motion Alderman Bud, second.
Second.
Alderman Bryant, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Um, mayor talked to me about this, uh, next motion, uh, that was to reimburse ward one from ward five in the amount of forty-five thousand contingent upon any and all payments received from the credit is just to be played in the ward fund, fund, but he said that has to go through the street.
Has to go through street and sewer, correct, Rocky?
That's correct. It's up here, section three dash two dash four. Subparagraph J of the city code, you'll have to go to the street sewer committee first. And if it's approved there, then it's brought back to the city council.
Do you need a motion to table?
Yeah. Motion to table, Alderman Bertle, second. Alderman Driscoll, roll call.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
John Bertle?
Yes.
Attorney Dorcheness?
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll?
Yes.
Lila Anzadi?
Yes.